Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners Meeting. I was thinking, we were thinking, since the students are here this morning, would you mind, we always start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, would you mind coming to the front, maybe leading us in the pledge? Is that okay with you guys? See, we're gonna put you to work, you didn't think you were just gonna come and not put you to work. Okay. Wait till everybody gets up front here. You guys are ready to go? The flag's over this way. Okay.
You'll start us.
You'll please rise and start us, please.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I had them all concerned. Yeah. Yeah. I was talking to them when I walked in, I said, "Now, you do know you have to write a paper about this when you get back to class." So they were concerned about that. But anyhow, this is the Board of Commissioners' meeting for September 25th, 2019. Our inspirational word this morning, "God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference." And we have our dog this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Isn't that working?
Yep.
Okay. Today, we have a female, kennel number six, they nicknamed her Pearl. She's about three years old. She's a perfect example of people not updating their information. She is actually chipped, they went through the process of chipping her. We scanned her for a chip, we called the chip company, and none of the information was available and updated. So, very important to update and get your license. We do the scanning just as a...
So, we have 27 other dogs in the kennel. Yes.
Thank you. She was a sweetie.
She is, she's a sweetie.
Well, we have a very busy agenda here this morning. Madam Clerk, we have a number of proclamations.
We do. The first one up is for Ernie Smith, the IT Director.
Ernie Smith, our IT Director. Ernie, if you'd like to come forward to one of the podiums, please.
It's like, do I have to?
Yeah, do I have to? I know, that's exactly what's like...
Why, isn't it working?
We've worked with you long enough, we can read your mind, we're, you know...
I think I've done this before.
Anyhow, you know, we had a surprise party for you there yesterday, surprise retirement party. Were you surprised, I hope?
I was, I was. I had one Saturday at the house also, I didn't know anything about.
You're ready to wrap up the retirement party, is what you're saying.
Looking to see if my mom's gonna come walking in.
Okay. Well, we have a special proclamation for you, Ernie, in the matter of expressing our appreciation and best wishes to Ernie Smith on his retirement from the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' office. Ernie announced his retirement as IT Director effective September 30th of this year. Ernie's being recognized for 18 years of service, beginning on January 9th, 2001, after his retirement from the Air Force. Thank you for your service to our country. Under Ernie's leadership, the Informational Technology Office has increased in employees being instrumental in the collaborative efforts to bring all departments, technology and telephones into an integrated system, as well as the E911 system. We were pretty much, I think, before Ernie got here, maybe using, what, strings and cups and stuff like that for technology?
Might not have been that far along.
Not that far along? Okay. Well, thank you. Anyhow, Ernie's a very cooperative, dependable worker, and all his untiring efforts will be remembered by his fellow workers here, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners that we hereby express appreciation for the faithful, conscientious, and rewarding service given by Ernie Smith to the county of Lorraine and its citizens. We wish Ernie and his wife Patsy, son Jack, the best of happiness, peace, and good health to be enjoyed throughout his retirement, and may he continue to enjoy his motorcycle trips. You gonna plan any trips anytime soon?
With Cordez?
With Jim, or?
No. Those days are long gone.
They're long gone, but I haven't been riding in a long time, and we haven't ridden in a long time together, so, maybe because I don't have any insurance or a plate on my bike for five years.
That could be part of it.
Well, you'll be busy and he won't.
Any words you'd like to share with us this morning?
Just thanks for everything. It's been, it's been good, it's been busy, and I'm looking forward to the end of it.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate all that you've done for us.
I've been here the longest, working with you, Ernie, and it's always been a pleasure. The only complaint I ever had from people was that you talked too much. Just kidding, just kidding.
Which is not...
No, I've never gotten a complaint in all the years that I've been here, and you are in all the different departments, so you've done a great job of not only just the work that you do, but how you conduct yourself here, too. So, we're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
It's gonna be hard to replace you.
I've been here the shortest. I know I gave you the biggest workload there for a while, and everything went so smoothly. I really appreciate it, Ernie. It's always good to know, we can just say, "Is Ernie in the building?"
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Shortest, he's the shortest in leaving that our emails won't end up on WikiLeaks or anything like that, so we're in good shape, right?
Well, so far, they're not.
So far, they're not.
Friday.
What does he tell everybody? Don't open any emails if you don't know what they are, right? We just had that Friday, we got spoofed from...
Mayor Kazura.
Mayor Kazura, wanting $500 and 100 gift cards.
It's nonstop, our system catches thousands of emails all the time.
I don't, the thing is, you'd think you got spoofed by Kazura, I know it was Kazura.
He actually told me that, he said, "That wasn't a joke, I want those."
You know, I've been with Ernie since the beginning, and I remember when Commissioner Moore brought him here. So, he's kind of a geeky, quiet guy, but you'll get to like him. It took a little while.
He was an Air Force guy, wasn't he?
I tell you, you know...
You're a Navy guy.
I'm a Navy guy, he picked the wrong service. It was, but...
That's what my grandmother said.
I knew we wouldn't have a long speech, but I was sure we would have a half an hour PowerPoint at least.
Yeah, it's something, you know, but we didn't have much for department back then, we had scattered pieces of this and scattered pieces of that, and, you know, but over years, we pulled some things together.
It's been a lot.
Put the IT department in and melded it with, what, the IT department was like one or two people here and there, and then we had the telecommunications people scattered over there, they were in the maintenance department, and 911 was off doing their thing, and handful of rogue consultants, and through continuation over years, we were able to cobble that together in what I call a really good department now. And then when we built the Justice Center, all the, all the equipment over there, because there's extensive amount of equipment, and we call it all IT, but it's a lot of electronic equipment that needs to be taken care of, and we cobbled that all into the department over the years. And so, our people are pretty universal in what they work on, and they gotta be very, very flexible, and, and Ernie's evolved that, and we have some good texts under his leadership, and, you know, that's gonna want to continue, because that's the legacy you leave. So, you know, those that say that David Moore didn't do much good when he was here, he did bring Ernie here.
He did one good thing, he brought Ernie.
He's now Commissioner, you know, you're out there now, I'm just having a little fun with you, but, you know, he, he really did provide for a good continuation with bringing Ernie and hiring Ernie into the county when we came here, because that was one of the things he did when he was here. So, thank you very much for that.
Yep.
Ernie, thank you for the times we spent together.
Thanks for everything.
I don't think those times are over by any measure, but I know when you told me you were tired, you meant you were tired.
Forty-three years in IT, I think, is enough for anybody.
Wow. Okay. We'd like to come down and present this to you. Next, Madam Clerk?
Adele Invati, the Director of Grafton Midview Public Library, we're celebrating 75 years.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Do you'd like to tell us a few words about the great Grafton Midview Public Library?
Oh, well, we are still here, we're celebrating 75 years, and I'm really proud of that, that we've served our community, the Midview community, the Grafton community for so long, and we're thriving in spite of the fact that people can't believe public libraries are still here. I can only attest to the fact that we are busy, and people feel the need for a social environment in their community. I also feel that we're the only place in town that you can come for a computer to use, that you are not judged by the books you read, the movies you look at, the color of your skin, the religion, or your political affiliate. So, I think that's democracy going on in Grafton.
Nice.
So, thank you for inviting me here.
You're welcome, thanks for coming. And tell Eric I said hello.
I will.
I have a comment you could share with everybody back at the library about a month ago. I was explaining to my granddaughter Bella that they were putting a new library in Elyria, and she's a sophomore, but she was lamenting the fact that they were closing her favorite library. And she said, "I just hope they bring the librarians, because they really make it."
I will tell my staff that.
I just, I guess on a personal note, when I was serving as a state rep, I used to hold my town hall meetings at your library, I think at least once a year, maybe twice a year in some cases, but staff there was always just so professional, so friendly. It's a, it's a very comfortable environment. There's something about libraries, you walk into libraries and all of a sudden you feel like the stress kinda come down, and you feel more relaxed, and, and, yeah, that calming thing, and, and your staff has always, you know, promoted that. I think I was over there also for an Eagle Scout project, your reading area adjacent to the library there, but, but everybody's always, always so friendly, and I gotta tell you, we're really blessed to have good libraries in Ohio. A lot of folks may not realize it, but I think when it comes to funding libraries, I think we're second only behind Hawaii, I believe it is, when it comes to the way that we fund our libraries here in the state of Ohio. And they play a very important role. You know, there are a lot of folks who can't afford the, the technology of today, so you can go to the library and get that technology. They're always putting on workshops on how folks can better use the technology, and look for jobs, and, and take care of their important business for their families online and things of that nature, so it's a great, a great resource. And yeah, there's still a lot of us who like to hold a book in our hands, you know, but you folks are probably doing some of the eBooks even these days, and that's kind of the technology of the future, but, but I can't say enough good things about the folks over there, and, and of course, the, the great Grafton Midview area community.
Thank you.
Just, just good folks. So, we have a certificate of recognition presented to Grafton Midview Public Library. The Lorraine County Commissioners congratulate you as you celebrate your 75th anniversary. The Board commends you for providing free and equal access to information while promoting personal development and encouraging literacy in the community, and it's signed this day by the Board of Commissioners, and we'd like to come down and present this to you. And Madam Clerk, we have another honoree this morning.
Father Cosum from St. Jude's, celebrating 35 years of retirement.
35 years.
Cosum, hi, Father.
Morning, Father.
If you'd come up to, probably his podium over here would work really well.
Good morning.
We're here to recognize you for your service to the community for more than 35 years, and would you like to share any words with us this morning?
Well, I can't believe I've been here 35 years, that's for sure. We're chatting with Matt before, before I came to St. Jude's, my first assignment was St. Peter's, Lorraine. Then I spent 11 years downtown, and that's where I first met Matt, he used to work at the Bishop's Office also, so, but really, 35 years here have been wonderful, they really, really have. We've got a great community, and the school is thriving, almost 500 students, and I'm just very honored to have had the opportunity to, to be part of this community. And the good news I also have today is that, you know, when they elect a new Pope, there's usually like white smoke they see. Well, we saw some white smoke Monday. I was supposed to retire actually September the 15th, and they didn't have anybody yet, but now they do.
Oh, great.
And I'm very happy to announce that his name is Father Joseph Skelco, good Italian name, and he is part of the congregation of the Fathers of St. Joseph.
Oh, wow.
If you remember, Father Larry Tosco just recently died, they have a wonderful center on Case Road, so he will be the pastor and director also of both.
Excellent.
And he'll be coming to St. Jude's October the 1st. Matter of fact, I've not met him yet, I talked to him yesterday, he's just a very kind and gentle soul, and I'll be meeting him for the first time at 11 o'clock today.
Wow. Well, you know, Father Cosum, I first had the chance, as you pointed out, to meet you, I think it was back in maybe '82, '83, you were the Bishop's right-hand man.
Secretary in the cancer, right.
Yeah, and I think you were even part of an interview process, I ended up being employed by the Diocese to do a weekly magazine show, similar to like a PM magazine format, with then Betty, Betty Bickett, and Jerry LaCamp, the Communications Director, and, and then later on was, you know, thrilled to find out that you were coming out to St. Jude in Elyria. And the one thing, and for those who have had a chance to hear Father Cosum's sermons over the years, you know, you go to church on Sunday, and sometimes it seems like the world's spinning out of control, sometimes it seems like your personal life may be spinning out of control, but Father would always talk about being more understanding of people, not judging people, realizing we have differences, but we actually have more similarities, you know, treating people with respect, and living at peace together and loving each other. And Father, you, you have always been that, that calm voice in the storm, and you're so humble and calm, and even when I see him at the gym, and he's pressing 400 pounds, he's still humble.
Not quite.
I see him at the gym all the time.
Now you gotta go to confession.
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly. Exactly. So, but...
The white lies again.
And it's a special honor for me to recognize you, Father Cosum. We first met in the 80s, when we joined the parish and my children were enrolled in the school. It wasn't apparent then what an important role you and St. Jude's would play in our family's lives and the lives of all of those at St. Jude's. Since becoming part of the St. Jude's family, my children attended and graduated from the school, my daughter Stephanie, who's here today, is a teacher there, my daughter-in-law is an aide there, I have two grandchildren who recently graduated from the school, and my third granddaughter is enrolled in 3rd grade there. Like so many families in the parish, I've watched my nieces and nephews go through the halls of the school, where our families had all of our life's spiritual milestones, from baptism, communion, confirmation, to weddings and funerals, and the constant was always you. He built a parish that welcomed parishioners home from college or other life events, and you built a football field where countless CYO players and their parents could enjoy the weekend activity. You constructed a pavilion where the families gather for annual picnics and other outdoor events, and you moved the playground adjacent to the school so that it wasn't across the parking lot. You've also funded and taken care of beautiful building and church improvements and additions. So, I know if the church walls could talk, there'd be so many stories of your leadership and compassionate pastoring. You've made a huge difference in, not just in the St. Jude's family, but in the community, and I thank you.
Thank you. And I really hope to stay around, and by retirement, I'm not going far, I'm going west, Vermillion.
Oh, staying in the county?
And it's still Lorraine County. Part, I have built a house in the woods, and I call it Camp Francis, so, retiring into Camp Francis.
Very nice. Well, Father Cosum, you baptized my children, it's a long time ago, probably when you first got here, just about, and then unfortunately, I've seen you recently, the passing of both Larry and Byron Kokowski and Doris, so, I know she was near and dear to you, since she lived right across the road there, and Byron, too, so, you've done a great job at, at St. Jude's, and thank you for your service there and the community.
Do we have any members of the church wanted to say anything today, or any members of the school?
This is our Principal, Molly Hibbler, and we really do have a wonderful, wonderful staff.
On behalf of the staff and the parish community, we too are so blessed to have Father. He has been such a support to the school, especially with us adopting more of an inclusive environment for our students with special needs or handicap accessible, accessibility, but he's just been there, he believes in us, he stands behind us, he's probably our number one cheerleader.
Oh.
And we too, you know, when we think of the school, and I hear the stories of how when he first arrived at the school, I believe there were some rooms back then that the roof was coming, the ceiling was coming down and everything, and needed painting, and he rolled up his sleeves, and ever since then, he's projected that kind of work ethic with everybody there. We roll up our sleeves and we get what needs to be done, it's because of him. So, he knows he's always gonna be a part of our community and our family, but we too, we are going to miss him dearly, so, thank you for recognizing him today.
Thank you. I always believe a little work never hurt anybody, and I feel very, very much part of this community, family.
Well, Father, this, this board would like to recognize you for your 35 years of passionate, tireless service to our community, and we'd like to come down and present this to you. And then next week, we'll have a presentation from our Visit Lorraine County Director, Jen Kennedy. That's fine, not a problem, not a problem.
Okay.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So move.
Second. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Miss Swita.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Miss Swita.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Miss Swita.
Aye.
Requisitions.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Miss Swita.
Aye.
Bills.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Miss Swita.
Aye.
Authorized various personal actions as indicated on the sum report sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
County Administrator Jim Cordez, good morning.
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have a number of personal matters, potential hires, collection center, maintenance department, IT department, I need the IT department. Real estate, two legal matters, update on union negotiations with the UAW, I am in receipt of a completed labor contract with the United Steelworkers and the Treasurer's Office. For the moment, I think that's it. All of those discussions and matters to be had are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session, so I would ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session and we discuss and act upon those matters that I've outlined. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oppose state takeover of opiate lawsuits brought by local governments.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
We have a proclamation, don't we, for that? Or did we work on, I thought I saw it in my email.
A resolution? A resolution? We have a resolution on that, and I think that was urged from the state as well.
Right, the CCO, we made a, voted to not let the Attorney General dictate where the money for the opiate litigation was going to go to. The only concern I did have with, Dewine did talk about that money maybe being diverted to the health departments, which I know, I mean, some health departments are super active in the opioid fight, and I know our, our health department does hand out the Narcan kits, which is, is a great thing, but to have all the money funneled through the health department, I don't think is a good, good way to go either, so, we do have a resolution talking about the matter of opposing a state takeover of opioid lawsuits brought by local governments. Were we, is this on our... Is this part of this? It is? Okay, I didn't realize that. Do we wanna read it, or no?
You can read it, let's, since we brought it to the front.
Okay. Whereas Lorraine County Commissioners by Resolution Number 17766, adopted November 29th, 2017, join the prosecuting attorney of Lorraine County, Ohio regarding the appointment of outside counsel pursuant to Section 309.09 and 305.14 of the Ohio Revised Code to file civil complaint against manufacturers and distributors of prescription opiates. Whereas Lorraine County Commissioners filed a lawsuit on behalf of our county on December 13th, 2017, against several drug manufacturers and pharmaceutical distributors to include, but not limited to Purdue Pharma, the maker of painkiller OxyContin, which is viewed as a major factor in the rise of opioid addictions across the country. Other defendants include Keflon Incorporated, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Jensen Pharmaceuticals, Watson Laboratories Incorporated, Endo Health Solutions, McKesson Corp., Cordial Health, and Amerisource Bergen Corp. And whereas Lorraine County Commissioners have filed the above referenced complaint against various drug manufacturers and distributors for their wrongful conduct in causing the opioid crisis, crisis which ravaged our community. Whereas Lorraine County Commissioners and Lorraine County prosecuting attorney have been fighting to break, bring dollars back to our community to compensate Lorraine County for monies our taxpayers have expended on the effects of the opioid crisis and for future costs associated with the crisis. And whereas Lorraine County, along with other counties and municipalities across Ohio, are currently negotiating what would be historic settlements of this, of these claims. Whereas the state of Ohio is seeking to introduce and pass legislation in the General Assembly which would eliminate Lorraine County's claim in the opioid litigation and give state government the exclusive right to litigate, settle, and distribute proceeds from the litigation. Whereas it has been widely reported that the proposed legislation would only guarantee local governments like Lorraine County a small percentage of the settlement proceeds. Whereas Lorraine County has been damaged by the aforementioned pharmaceutical distributors and drug manufacturers, and Lorraine County residents have a constitutional right to seek redress for these wrongs. And whereas the proposed legislation is an unconstitutional and outrageous overreach by state government to take away local control over this litigation and divert money that rightfully belongs to the citizens of Lorraine County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lorraine County Commissioner does hereby express a strong opposition to any attempt by state officials and/or Ohio General Assembly to take over the opioid litigation that the Lorraine County Commissioners have brought on behalf of our county, and the Commissioners' clerk shall forward a copy of this resolution to the Governor of State, Ohio Attorney General, Speaker of the House, President of the Ohio State Senate, and all legislative representatives of Lorraine County. That was a lot, that's a big mouthful, but it's really important, we have been damaged. Every, every department in Lorraine County has been affected by the opioid litigation, or the opioid crisis, and this litigation is hopefully gonna make us somewhat whole, it's never gonna make us completely whole, but to try to offset some of the costs that have been incurred because of what this has done to our community.
Correct.
I think that having served in the legislature, I know that when... I think that having served in the legislature, I know that when money ends up in Columbus, it doesn't necessarily go back. And the concern is that, you know, if this money ends up going into Columbus, then it gets caught up in a lot of, literally, political tape. It means that a lot of those dollars don't come back. I see the sheriff and his leadership team in the back there. And, you know, we know how hard your people have been working to deal with this issue. We know how challenging it's been for Jerry Ennis's boss, Dennis Will, and his whole team over there in the prosecutor's office, the coroner's office, and for this community. And so, you know, we entered into that litigation with the understanding that when those dollars came back, they would specifically be earmarked to address the epidemic. And it is an epidemic in this, in this county. But the money should not be down in Columbus. Columbus hasn't been doing the heavy lifting to this point, like all the other communities have. And I don't see folks racing up here all the time saying, what can we do for you today? We certainly haven't received, I don't think, the resources that we need to address the issue. So normally, the Attorney General, I, you know, like a number of things that he supports, but this is one that definitely came out of left field, and I certainly don't agree with. And certainly am glad that the governor wasted no time in speaking up, saying it would be a huge mistake if Mr. Yost decided to, you know, keep those funds down there in Columbus and then decide where they would go. So yes, we're very opposed to any action by the legislature or by the Attorney General to take these funds elsewhere. We have an epidemic here. Those funds, should we be successful in receiving those funds, would be earmarked to help address the epidemic here in Lorraine County. And it won't do as much good if it ends up in Columbus and they end up playing political games and deciding, you know, which communities get the funds and which ones don't.
Like we talked about last week with the gas tax, for instance, and I don't know Lorraine County's numbers, but Cuyahoga, they spend $20 million in gas tax money, goes down to Columbus. And out of that 20 million, they get $2 million back. So that's how they have these crazy formulas down there. If that money, we don't know how much we'll get back if it gets, ends up in Columbus. So it needs to come back where it started, and that's with us.
Well, we're already anticipating some shortfalls. So for us to surrender access to those funds would, would not be very responsible.
Not at all.
Columbus is like a casino. The house always wins.
That's a good way to put it.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Lundey.
Yes.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Authorized payment of $1,000 to Rippey Mercado Funeral Home Parma for in-aging veteran Donald C. Gensler, Larry in accordance with the Ohio Revenue Code 5901.29.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Advertise public hearings for updates to Lorraine County erosion and sediment control rules and post-construction rules, comprehensive storm water management. Notice being the Chronicle and Journal on October 1st and 8th. And first hearing will be October 15th at 9:30 and 2nd October 30th at 10:00 a.m.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Children and family, Amendment Resolution 19250, adopted April 24th, 2019, approving an interning contract with the Ohio Department of Developmental Disabilities for the purchase of services for fiscal year 20. Amendment is to reflect an increase of $118,697 for the early intervention services for a total contract of $672,588 effective, retroactive July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Community development award various contracts for homeowners to receive grant assistance from CHIP program year 18 home repair and private rehab activities that contain contingencies and best, most responsive complying with specifications be paid from the CHIP program year 18 contract services. One GenMet Construction LLC Lorraine in the amount of $34,899 for Monica Bakie at 43222 Bell Avenue, Sheffield Lake. Green Home Solutions Cleveland in the amount of $36,190 for Margaret Bishop at 6690 Murray Ridge Road, Leary Township. Green Home Solutions Cleveland in the amount of $42,982 for Willie Jean Kraft at 4915 Rosewood Drive, Sheffield Lake. And Great Lakes Electric Myland in the amount of $13,350 for Holly Whiteside and Camera Hog at 24 North Park Street, Overland.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
See Dawn's here this morning. Anything you want to add to this? No? Our community development director? Okay.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Job and family, authorize an intern to a service agreement with National Alliance Security Agency, Inc., Vandela in the amount of $66,993.87 for security effective October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020, and authorize direct duty to execute on behalf of the Board with the Prosecutor's approval as per form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Adapt statement of policies for the Prevention and Retention Contingency Program effective October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2021, in accordance with the Ohio Revenue Code 5108.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Children's Services authorize various personnel to utilize the agency's MasterCard for the year 2019 not to exceed 2,500 for the permissible expenses in accordance with the policy.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Engineer approve an intern of professional service agreement with Greensman Peterson, Inc., Burya in the amount of $12,816 to perform a bridge dive inspection on the East 31st Street Bridge, 0069 Lorraine. Will be paid from the bridge professional service account and authorize engineer to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutor's approval as per form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, approve an intern contract with Fireland to provide services to the Sheriff for medication assistance treatment on a pre-release volunteer basis to inmates diagnosed with opiate addiction that are housed in the county jail.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Is the sheriff back there? Anything you want to add on this one, Sheriff? Always good to see you. Thanks for joining us this morning.
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners and everybody.
Good morning.
Yeah, I know Assistant Jail Administrator Melissa Fisher was here last week talking about the MAT program, which is a great program. We're glad to see Fireland's in Lakota join in. And we did invite the Mahara's Board to come on out to the jail and view the special needs pod and the entire jail. I mean, they know what some of the problems are, but you're right, the funding needs to be there to support this too.
Good.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita. Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning for public comment, if you'll please keep it to three minutes. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move to the next item.
You got your button?
Yes, we got our button.
About a little bit for the crime lab. So the folks down there in between the increased volume of work they have, trying to get some talking points out, that have been getting where they can to speak about the levy for the crime lab. It's much needed. We really want to position the lab, get it into a new home, get a certified lab. We've picked up a lot of new work. I'm grateful for our relationship with the domestic courts and also with the common police court with the dope probation work now. We're also looking at a huge amount of fingerprinting work that needs to be done that's backlogged in Lorraine County. The, some folks lack the resources for that, so it's another volume of work we're looking to take on to improve the community. What I did know is that every time somebody's arrested, even if they've been fingerprinted before, they got to be re-fingerprinted. And then the clerk courts are responsible for making sure that inventory of fingerprinting is done. So they've been doing a lot of it out at the jail, I think, with, with the sheriff's folks. And so some of the jurisdictions have been falling behind because they don't have the capability, and you've been helping them out. We've developed some capability at the lab that's a little bit more convenient. So we're looking at, you know, trying to fill that gap and be a good partner with all those folks. There's a lot of opportunity for collaborations here to make it better for everybody in all the communities. But we can't live on the resources that were provided to the lab way back in the early 80s. It's the same dollar value. It hasn't changed. What's changed is the need.
You might want to emphasize the fact that if we are certified, we will be able to access outside dollars. Instead of using local money, we can get federal.
You take it, Commissioner, go with it.
I'm not sure exactly how much money we're leaving on the table by not being certified, but we can't be certified in where we're at right now. So we have to move.
We have to move, develop, you know, a lab that, that, that has different capabilities. Being in the basement of the low levels with a deep fryer next to some of our equipment is not, not necessarily the place where we're going to get certified. We've always moved the lab around and made do and did the best we can, but, but it's time. And, and it's, it's, it's time for us to step up. We're not talking a great deal of funding. We're already running negative, and we're shoring that, that up to make sure the services get out there, but we can't do that endlessly. We got a really nice team of folks down there. We got good partners. For the first time in a long time, I really, I really feel the synergies of what we're doing. I feel the purpose of what we're doing more fully. I'm hoping that the community understands that, that, that we're, we're trying to find the efficiencies in everything we're doing, but it still takes some additional resources. So it's Issue 19. It's deep on the ballot. Please remember, as we get all the way down there. Because people said they get a little tired with, with the issues when they get that far down and they become a little negative. I had hoped we were a little further up. Generally speaking, they get a little, sometimes get a little frustrated the deeper they go on to, on to those, those matters. So I'm not, I'm not sure how they'll feel when they get all the way down to Issue 19. But, but that said, we'll try to, going to get our letters out, get some sample letters out to our supporters, so maybe we can get some stuff into the paper. And today, we have to take a break because we're going over to Chronicle to talk to the editor. I know you guys didn't know that, but I scheduled us to take a walk across the parking lot.
To talk about.
Case to the Chronicle.
About the crime lab?
So I think I told Mr. President there that we were doing that last week, but I were missing.
I didn't know that.
Didn't tell you guys, but I didn't think you'd mind us going over.
He wasn't here last week.
And Mugg and Brad for a little, for a little bit of time, so.
While we're talking about issues of grant money and stuff, I know you and I had talked yesterday about some inaccuracies and what was reported, the loss of grant money from the Mars Board. Do you want to talk about that? Are you prepared to talk about that right now?
I'm always prepared to talk. I mean, that's, that's kind of legendary there.
True that.
On the floor, it's either one. What part of the grant money?
Reflecting the difference in the numbers.
Well, the fact that the, it wasn't a maybe, we would have got it, that the fact that it was pretty much a guaranteed grant if we would have, if they would have asked for it. And the fact that it's a three-year grant, so that 325 is not really 325, it's, it's 975.
Well, my understanding was a little bit different than, than the way it was positioned last week. And I looked at this and verified it a couple times. My understanding that this was a renewal grant. Renewal grants are a little bit different than when you first apply for grants. Renewal grants are almost certainly guaranteed, but you have to update your information and resubmit. This grant was a renewal grant. It was a given. It was for 325,000 a year for three years, which was 975,000. That's the one grant that was, I think it was due in November, December timeframe of 2018. Again, the understanding and the impression I was left with was that we simply had to supply the necessary grant material and request renewal of that grant, and it would have been accomplished without, without too much fanfare and with a certain amount of guarantee.
Yeah, it continues to be communicated to the community that it was a competitive grant.
It wasn't a competitive grant. It was a renewal grant.
Okay. We just want to make sure the public has the right information.
So with a, with a competitive grant, you do have uncertainty. You do, you are competing against other folks to position yourself. But with a renewal, you've already gone through the competitive process, and you're just, you're getting continuation funding. So you have to, but you still have to put through your reports and your updates, and you close out certain fundings, much like we do with the FTA. We, we get funding for the FTA. Those are, those are allocations, and then we convert them to grants, but we have to submit all our paperwork to the FTA. We're not, we're not actually competing for those dollars. We get a certain amount of funding, but we, we have to convert that into grants, and, and that, that is the same thing. It's a, it's a continuation. It's a renewal of our funding through FTA. We do the same thing with the FAA when we do our maintenance money for, for the airport. So there is a portion of that that is competitive. We do put in for other project money. That's a competitive process. Sometimes we're successful, and sometimes we're not. But there's, the different type is, is those funds that are certainly earmarked for us, and we just got to renew our, our interest in them and make sure that they let us know that we still have our programming going forward and update our requirements from the prior funding that we received. They're certainly not going to give us more and more funding without having accomplished what we're supposed to accomplish with the other funding. So that, that needs to be refreshed. That's my understanding of those funds. The, that's separate from the funds.
The 400,000.
That was going to be, and I didn't bring my notes. They're on my desk. The, it was a J something.
Justice.
Justice.
Justice something grant, yeah.
Grant that was going to be applied for, which was a few hundred thousand. That was in May-June timeframe for, and I was further, was made aware that when those folks came in, that they were, they were working with the courts. They were surprised that we had never applied for one of those grants with the. The understanding by the folks that could apply was, well, we had the SAMSSA grant, so we probably were not eligible for one of them, which was completely on, on.
Inaccurate?
Yeah, that's a good word, inaccurate. And so they encouraged us local, the folks here, to get busy and apply for one of those grants. And we should have had have applied for one of them, even though we had the SAMSSA, we were eligible. And we should have been applying for those grants all along, in addition to the SAMSSA grant, which hadn't been accomplished. I'm trying to piece this together. You know, I'm not in, I'm not in the mainstream.
We're always trying to use outside dollars, so we're not using local money. I mean, if we can, we try to use state or federal dollars first.
Now, the, 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 the May-June grant, the justice grant, that would have been a competitive grant. And, and I will say, look, and I told you, Commissioner Swita, they look for any reason to reject a competitive grant, because there, there's, there's 500 people that want a grant, and they can only award 100.
Right.
So it doesn't take much for them to do, to do that. 16, 17 years ago, we submitted a grant, and it had the wrong version of WordPerfect that we used. And they kicked it out. And, and we couldn't find the right version of WordPerfect to get it resubmitted. And we had 48 hours. We're trying to load up a new, buy and load up a new version of WordPerfect to, to be able to get it submitted. They, they, they just want to get rid of these things really, really fast, so they can, they can pare it down and, and deal with less of them. So sometimes things do get kicked out. I don't know what happened in May or June and why it got kicked out. Sometimes it's you submit it on an old form. The regulations are this thick. You're going through that, and you may miss that they, they updated what version you have to submit in, or is it what, what software it needs to be submitted in, or this form has been changed. And there's three lines on it now that aren't on the old form, and you didn't catch it, and you made the submission. Just, you know, it happens. But that's why you want to submit days in advance if you can, so when it gets kicked back, hopefully it gets kicked back quickly, and you have enough time to recover from that and make, make a change to it. I remember one time we got locked out of the electronic submission, because the passwords weren't working. We couldn't get anybody to update our passwords, and we were watching the clock tick back. We finally got in like three minutes before the deadline. It's another thing, you know, if you can't get in, or you have problems with your internet, you're waiting too, too long. When that thing takes over, there is no couple seconds. It just shuts down, because everything's submitted online now. So a lot of things can happen.
But these funds, I mean, the bottom line is, these funds are badly needed for our specialty courts.
They are.
The ones that are addressing mental illness, the ones that are addressing the addiction that's taking place in our community. We're trying to help these people get back on their feet, so that they don't end up breaking into your homes and ending up being incarcerated, ending up in our jail, and, and get them back to their families and back to a normal way of life.
But my, my, my present understanding from having additional conversations since the Mars Board met was that these were not competitive funds as reported. These were pretty well guaranteed funds on a renewal grant, and it wasn't 325,000. It was 975,000.
Now, the media's being told they were competitive grants, and that's misleading.
I don't know what information the hell was shared. It wasn't there.
I, David Aschenhurst is not the type of person that would purposely say something to lie. You know what I mean? So he, I don't think he lied about it. I just don't think he had the correct information.
Yeah, I'm not saying that he. Yeah, I'm not saying that he did, I'm just saying that it's not the correct information.
Right.
And if I could share, you know, I'm out in the public a lot and the public's concerned about this. They, if, if in fact there's no clarity in the way this is being reported, it's reflecting poorly on the board. The Board of Directors is walking away from this looking as though they're not providing proper oversight, that the grant money is now, now if, at best, being questioned. Nobody quite understands if it was funds that we were going to get, that we had to apply for, why they were applied for. And I think there needs to be a stronger involvement from that board at this point to get this, get the train back on the track.
Yeah, I agree.
No, I think the, probably the saddest point is that the board members didn't know that some of these grants have been lost until it came to their attention through the, through the reporting. So, I, I don't understand why the communications breakdown is taking place or the lack of disclosure is taking place. You know, the director works for the board and the board is supposed to have all this information. And it was disappointing to find out that there were board members that did not know about it until they read about it in the paper. But still, the issue remains that the hope is that the board will step up and use its resources to help backfill some of these, well, significant dollars that have been lost.
It's a huge gap. Under your report?
Well, yeah, I didn't know that was my report, but I'm fine to talk about whatever you, you asked me to verify the information that we received, and that's the information that I've retained, I, I received after verification. So, do, do with it what you wish, and, and we can go forward from there. Kind of lost track of what I was doing, but, so I will yield to counsel. Thank you.
Senator Ennis.
I just have a whole bunch of pending and, well, it's all pending litigation to update with the commissioners in executive session.
Okay.
Commissioner's report.
One thing, I went down this week to get my dog license and it was brought to my attention that our resolution that we did in August was a little bit off. We, what we did was, we raised the dog license fees, four dollars the first year, two dollars in year 2020, two dollars in year 2021, and two dollars in year 2022. So, the accurate amount for the one-year tag, there was no problem. The three-year tag, however, needs to be adjusted to, in nineteen, in two thousand and nineteen, the three-year tag will be sixty-six. In two thousand and twenty, it'll be seventy-two. In two thousand and twenty-one, it'll be seventy-six. In two thousand and twenty-two, it'll be seventy-eight. And then the other issue is normally a permanent dog license, they just multiply it times ten. So, the ten-year dog license tag will, in two thousand and nineteen, will start at two hundred and sixty dollars and will continue at two hundred and sixty dollars forever until there's a time that the dog license fees gets raised again. So, we got that, do we need to make that in the form of a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I will make a motion that we adjust those figures to the appropriate amounts.
Okay. I would second that.
Further discussion?
Just want to make sure that these are the right numbers this time.
I went with, I went down with Casey, well, first, my assistant and I, Tony Anne, we were brainstorming and then we went down and verified it with Casey Saunders, our director of the monies.
Monies, okay.
Moskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Ms. Sweetie.
Hi.
On a happy note, at the dog kennel, I did talk to one of our volunteers down there and somebody again donated the sunshade sails that they put outside in the dog runs. Last year, Lori Wilber from W O B L W D L W donated four of them. They take them down in the winter time, try to protect them, but they do get damaged after some time. So, we had two more people donate. Anytime our, our volunteers at the, put on their Facebook page that we need, are in need of anything at the kennel, our community steps up and, and donates whatever we need. We haven't bought food in years and dog licenses, leash, or not licenses, leashes, collars, all those kinds of things. Everything gets donated by our community because they are so generous to our kennels. So, thank you to everybody that donates. As far as my last Wednesday, Commissioner Sweetie and I had a great meal at the Mexican Mutual, which was a fundraiser for their scholarship fund. Great people, we had a nice time there. Thursday, I went to the collection center to talk to Joe Pacanakis about tire recycling from Channel Five News. We had Dave Cavell from the Health Department to talk about the health concerns when it comes to standing water and tires that breed mosquitoes. The reporter and his camera guy were very impressed with our facility and said that they would like to come back and do a story about our collection center. And his camera guy was from Avon and he had just moved, and he could have used almost every service that we provide there for drop-offs, for recyclable material. And he's like, I wish I would knew that, I wish I knew that. And so, we need to get the word out there of all the things that we do take at our collection center. Just so you know, talking about tires, we collected over four hundred thousand pounds of tires this year. So, we, we do a really good job. We have three collect, locations that you could drop them off in Lorain, Alira, and Grafton Township. So, we do a good job. Sometimes we, a lot of people don't know what we do there, but go to our Facebook page or come to the, the commissioner's page and you can find out more about our collection center, where it's at, and we're open three days a week and you can find out those dates and times. Friday, I had my County Commissioners Association Board meeting in Columbus. Governor DeWine did come in and talk to us during our meeting and discuss the opioid, opioid litigation and also new laws pertaining to gun control. He's hoping to enact procedures to keep guns out of the hands of people with mental illness by being able to seize the guns as soon as they are regarded as dangerous to themselves or to others. After our meeting, the women stayed after to talk about the one hundred-year anniversary of the women's suffrage. And I realized, I found out that day, that the yellow rose is significant because the men who were voting in favor of the women's right to vote wore a yellow rose on their lapel to show that they voted for it. So, I talked to Mr. Cortez briefly yesterday in the hallway to let them know that in remembrance of the hundred-year anniversary, I'd like to plant some yellow rose bushes. I'm, I'm not sure where, for, and have one for each of the Lorain County commissioners who are women. So, so far, we have four. We've got Mary Jo Vacy, Betty Blair, myself, and Commissioner Sweetie. So, I think that would be, we'll have to do this next year, it's in August, so we have some time to talk about if we want to, you know, make it something cool and we have time to discuss it. So, it's in August of next year will be the anniversary. And that is the end of my report.
Yeah, I think it's really important that we remind those around us about the, the history in this country, especially the, the young ladies who, I know, having this conversation with my niece, they, they're like, oh yeah, you're right, I do remember hearing about that. But, you know, it wasn't so long ago that women weren't able to vote.
In Mississippi, it was just eighty-four that they enacted it, right?
Yes.
I mean, that's crazy.
That's very crazy.
I think they were able to vote, I just think it wasn't recognized officially. I think it was still on the books that way, but, and, you know, even when we hear about the whole civil rights movement and all those who gave their lives and, you know, some got beat up severely just for trying to register people to vote, just amazes me how people still don't go out and vote. But, but it wasn't, wasn't so long ago. There's still a glass ceiling out there that needs to be broken through, but, but yeah, until then, it was definitely a man's world.
Yeah.
Up through, what, nineteen nineteen? So, had the opportunity to attend the Children's Advocacy Center and Rape Crisis Center luncheon, anniversary luncheon that they held at the Community College last Friday. You know, it's just so important for people in the community to, you know, to really speak up when you see things, hear things that aren't right when it comes to victims of, of abuse, you know, in this country. The speaker there, Sarah Klein, she was one of nearly, I guess, two hundred victims of a trainer, you may have seen the national story, the Olympic women's gymnastics trainer there by name Larry Nassar. Anyhow, the court finally, after all those years, brought in all two hundred women. They all had a chance to tell their story while he sat there and listened, and the whole court and the whole nation got to watch that on TV for almost course of a week. She also was the Arthur Ashe Courage Award recipient at the ESPY Awards and very, very moving story. But unfortunately, there are a lot of people who, a lot of young ladies who come home and even try to explain to their parents that something just didn't go right today. And, you know, sometimes the parents think, well, that's a person of authority, a person couldn't have possibly done anything wrong. Sure, you're not imagining something? You know, so I think when those messages are brought forward, we need to, you know, take them seriously. And I realize for investigators, it's a little bit more of a challenge because sometimes it's one person's word against another. And unfortunately, it takes several victims sometimes before anybody can actually build a case. But, but it was very, very disturbing, but a very harsh reminder of how we need to pay attention to this whole issue of rape and the rape crisis in our, in our society these days. Had the opportunity to attend the big trucks event over in Avon Lake at the Fire Department there, the Safety Center, rather. And I know our SWAT team participated in that and took out our SWAT vehicle. I always say, when that big piece of armor equipment shows up in your driveway, you know it's going to be a bad day. But it was very well attended. They had some, some old police cars there, fire trucks, ladder trucks, and you name it. But just, that event gets bigger and bigger every year. So, if you have kids, remember to bring them over to that event, they'll have a, a great time, just amazed by how big the crowds are. Apple Festival was enjoyable. Of course, I'm trying to stay on a diet here, so it was hard walking by all this amazing food. But it's always good to see people, sometimes you see people you haven't seen in a long time at the Apple Festival, and good conversation and just a relaxing environment. And we're always glad to be, be a part of that. I think with the work on the fountain and the stage not being available, we had them using the, the front of the courthouse for the stage this year, and always glad to work with the folks at the Apple Festival. Had the opportunity to attend the Labor Steak Fry on Sunday. Steaks were very good. And would like to send out a special congratulations to Tim Elcorn with WEOL Radio. Had the opportunity to work with Tim very, very early on in my career and in his career when we were doing some cable sports, but he now is going to be the official voice of the Cleveland Cavaliers. You know, it's unfortunate that it took the passing of Mr. McLeod to, you know, create all the, the circumstances here, but, you know, anybody who knows Tim knows that he's just a first-class guy, very professional, great broadcaster, and certainly, we've been blessed to have him doing our high school games for a long period of time here in the county, and he's had the opportunity to even do a couple Indians games along the way. And I know he and Joe Tate have become very close friends, but we're just honored to have one of our own now being the voice of the Cleveland Cavaliers. And I'd like to, on a personal note, say happy birthday to my wife, Marva. Her birthday was yesterday. Went out for a very nice dinner yesterday and, and I thought, wow, the evening couldn't get any better. We're pulling in the driveway and the Indians had just loaded the bases and Jose Ramirez came to the plate. She's a big Jose Ramirez fan, and she said, Jose, get a grand slam for me for my birthday. And a couple pitches later.
He did?
Ramirez hit a grand slam.
Oh, nice.
I don't know how you topped that one. So, I got topped by Jose Ramirez yesterday.
So, what, how was that hot dog at Costco?
Yeah, the hot dog at Costco.
The nice dinner that he took.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought he was going to say the SWAT vehicle was in his truck, I mean driveway.
We, we went to Pure W and the hot dog wasn't on the menu, so.
Yeah, I still think there's the best meal going for a buck fifty to hot dog at Costco.
It is, it is. You're right. That completes my report.
So, as Commissioner Kokowski said, we had Mexican Mutual Scholarship Dinner last week. And one thing I've learned with time is that you arrive early or there's, you're going to be disappointed. So, that was enjoyable last Wednesday. Thursday was really a busy day. The morning was, in the morning, they had the Second Harvest Child Hunger Summit at LCC, and child food insecurity is a source of pain for so many right here in our community. Second Harvest coordinates this event for school and community leaders so that they can collaborate and discover more pathways to alleviate that crisis. One in five children are affected by hunger, and that's frightening. We have our, the SNAP programs available, most people are familiar with that, but one thing I learned was the WIC program isn't fully utilized, there's always money left over. And in discussions in our breakout work sessions, one of the concerns was that sometimes there's a stigma, there's an uncomfortable type of situation when they go to a counter, they don't know if the food is qualified for that program or not. So, we were talking about some, some really viable solutions and methods of perhaps making that a more comfortable situation so that the food gets where it needs to be. I attended the Wellington Kiwanis Thursday as well. They hosted guest speaker Ed Van Hooch, who's the new GM at Lorain Medina Rural Electric Cooperative. And I learned that there is going to be a filming of a Liam Nielsen movie in Wellington, and I just keep saying, it's the year of Wellington, trust me. This is just one more thing on, on their checkoff list. There was a ribbon cutting at my alma mater, the old Central School in Amherst, which the Springer family, truly a gift to the community what they've done with that building. Amherst is where about two years ago, Facebook almost imploded with Amherst members who were having a fit because the pizza place was being torn down. And they still have signs through town about, bring back the Sandstone Center of the World sign. Right. And so, here's this structure that has housed so many residents and, and previous students from different varying points. I know at one time, it was the only school in town. When I attended, it was seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, but they converted it into a beautiful senior living facility, very contemporary. And I think there's another public open house, maybe Friday, so anybody interested could still walk through there. They did a beautiful job. Lorain County Community Action had a, their wine tasting and fundraiser that evening at Cork Tree. It was packed, it was completely packed. And then Lorain County Health and Dentistry also overlapped. They had their wine tasting, and I wasn't tasting at every stop, trust me. Out at Lakeview Park and wrapped up the night supporting new candidate Zach Step, who has emerged to enter the political scene. Friday was the Child Advocacy Center and Rape Crisis Luncheon. And one thing that I think Commissioner Lundey, Lundey, I think you and I talked about this, what is interesting, a statistic, what Sarah Klein had said, and she was really petitioning to our state senators, they need to change the.
Statute of limitations.
Statute of limitations because the average rape crisis victim will not come to terms, recognition, or acceptance of what occurred till that fifty-to-fifty-two-year age bracket. And I don't know what, what creates that recognition at that timeline in life, but that is the most likely time period where they're going to be most comfortable to speak out and actually take action. So, the statute is really a fooler. It implies that, that something's not valid, it implies that they just, you know, that's when you get all the questions about, is it true, is it not true? And these victims have lived that, is it true, is it not true, for a lot of years already. So, very eye-opening. Attended the Oberlin City Schools groundbreaking for their new mid, middle school. It was roasting and we were in the sun, but it was well-attended and they're excited to start that. It was the end of an era because they will no longer be using that football field anymore as the school gets constructed on that site. South Lorain had their block party on Friday evening. It was not only well-attended, everything was almost free or close to free, but CNN was there. And what they're doing is they are interviewing folks in the community, the Hispanic community, and they're running a feature on, and a documentary on Hispanic communities, their rebirth and how they fit into local cities and communities, and they will be revisiting again. So, look for a new spotlight coming out on Lorain. I was out at the Apple Festival Friday evening as well. Thank you to our team who helped man the. Thank you to our team who helped man the Commissioners' booth. They kept it open for us all weekend. I was there Friday night and Sunday, but they did the heavy lifting on keeping the booth open. The Big Truck Event in Avon Lake, I think, shout out to Avon Lake. They really transported the visitors well. You know, they had the shuttle to the shopping center. It was quick. It was moving. And all the kids get to blow the big horns, which they love. I had get-out-the-vote training at the Bricklayers Building on Saturday afternoon. And then Saturday evening was the NAACP Annual Freedom Dinner where Dr. Sampson was the guest speaker. Dr. Hardy was there. Still, a lot of division over this local, state control, school issue. And I'm not certain that that evening unified anything. That evening, they burned the Big Fish at another successful Fire Fish event. And Lorraine had a sellout evening. They had a sellout at the Palace for the Michael Stanley appearance while they had the Fish Festival. The town was full of cars. And by nine thirty, speak of the devil, had to stop people from coming in. They were past capacity. So it was a fun night in Lorraine. Sunday was the Labor Agency Steak Fry. And I do want to retreat back that on Thursday, because it was such a full day, I did miss the Township Trustee Meeting. And I understand conversation arose over the Building Department. I put a shout out. I hope that they're going to come to our last hearing if there are questions left on the table or anything that they still need clarification on. We do have one more hearing. And that concludes my report.
October first at nine thirty, the Commissioners will meet. That's the final report on the Calvern Ditch and the second public hearing on the Building Department. Board correspondents.
I would make the motion that the reading be waived.
I'll second.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sweeten.
Aye.
In no other business at this time, I would move that we go into executive session for the reasons stated by the county administrator and the assistant county prosecutor.
I'll second.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sweeten.
Aye.
There's cake in the back for Ernie.
Oh, cake in the back for Ernie. Oh.
Oh, I forgot about that. Yes, please have some cake.
Cake.
Celebrate Ernie's retirement.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine thirty at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Aliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.